All right. We will go ahead and get started on our workshop discussing the opioid settlement. I have a hard time without work. Opioid. All right, and then we also have an executive session. But Mr. John Luthy will start us out on the opioid settlement and give us some legal information on this. And we welcome all that are here. We appreciate you being here. And then Mr. Jordan Mathis will give us some information after we're done.
Okay, thank you.
My part will be brief. I hope about five minutes.
Okay.
You know that we joined opioid litigation against manufacturers, distributors, and retailers of opioids. And there was recently a settlement between all of Utah and the three main distributors: McKesson Corporation, AmerisourceBergen, and Cardinal Health, as well as a separate settlement with Janssen that's a subsidiary of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And litigation continues with the retailers and manufacturers and the smaller distributors. But a big, relatively big chunk of money is coming to Utah and Cache County from the settlement with those distributors. I put up on the screen the consent judgment where the court acknowledged our settlement and were able to move forward. I've given you a copy of the One Utah Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding in case you want to peruse it later, or it may be nice to have a hard copy if you want to see specific sections as we go through them. Now, oh, my computer says I don't have enough data to show you the settlement. Let's see. Just going to try opening it again. It's not recognizing my thumb drive. We'll just talk through the sections then, and you can refer to your hard copy. Section three of that agreement is where it shows that of the money coming to Utah, 50% is going to the state, 50% is going to the counties. Section four lets us know that there, that a firm, and that firm's been identified now, it's Brown Greer, they've handled lots of these kinds of settlements. There's a firm that will distribute money directly from the fund to the counties. So it does, the stuff coming to us does not go through the state. It comes to us directly. We've given Craig McAllister's information as the county treasurer. He'll be the one that will receive the funds and they're, they have his information and we'll be coordinating that with him. The local, section five there notes that the county, once it gets the funds, can share those funds if it wants with the municipalities and other jurisdictions in the county. There's not an obligation to. And this agreement and all the terms that we're talking about now apply just to the funds that we'll be getting from this settlement with those three distributors in Jansson. If we get other settlements or judgment later from others, the rules may very well be different. At this point, applies to this settlement. One thing to note, section six, we do have attorney's fees to pay. Our agreement with our, our initial agreement with our outside attorneys was that they would get a 20% commission. Under this settlement, they've agreed to only take a 15% commission. Beyond that, there is a national fund set up for attorney's fees. And they will first apply to the National Attorney's Fees Fund to get paid. We don't know if they'll be able to get their attorney's fees completely paid out of that fund, but there's a potential that all of them will get paid out of that fund, and we hope at least a good chunk. Once we know how much gets paid out of that fund, then the remaining 15%, we may, whatever's left of that 15%, we, out of what we're getting.
So the numbers that have been provided to us?
Are pre-attorney's fees numbers, yep. Section seven of the agreement talks about reporting. 7.2 is the first section that applies to the county, where a settling party local government, "Settling party local governments shall file with the administrator on or before May 30th of each year a proposed plan detailing the anticipated use of the settlement funds, including the amount of funds it anticipates dispersing and the proposed uses of those funds." So one of the things to note about that is the fact that you need to say how much of what you're getting, you're dispersing implies that you don't have to disperse everything, all of the funds each year as they come in. But you do need to say your, your plan. What do we plan to use the funds for, and how much are we dispersing this year?
And John, how many years?
This is an 18-year, we'll get the funds out, paid out over 18 years. And then 7.3, after we do the plan for the upcoming year, on May 30th, then on June 30th, we need to submit a report of the amount of refunds, the funds that we received, the allocation of those funds, and the amounts dispersed on approved allocations. And the maximum amount that we can use for administrative costs under 7.4 is 1%. Question might be, did we, were we supposed to get a plan out and a report out this last May and this June? I don't believe so, because we haven't been paid anything yet. So I think that the most that could be required of us is get a plan out as soon as possible after we get money. But my, but we can kind of see what others plan to do as we get money, whether we all kind of wait to do our first plan next May, or get one out this year once we get money. We can follow up on that. And we'll need to keep records of how we use the money. We'll need to put that plan up on our website and for, and there are enforcement mechanisms so that you only use your money for what you're allowed to use it for. And I know that the health department, Jordan, is going to go into what we're allowed to use it for, but if you want to reference Schedule A at the end of that settlement agreement has a list of things that we are agreeing to prioritize, from naloxone and other reverse opioid overdose drugs to expanding neonatal abstinent, no, treatment for neonatal programs. So the first Schedule A has priorities. Schedule B has the detailed list of all the things that you can use your money for, but they are the only things you can use your money for. And then at the end of that, it shows the percentages that each county will be, this is the very back page of that stapled agreement, shows the percentages that each county gets. And these are not based on population. Population is worked in kind of as a component, but there's a formula that's being used nationwide that we agreed to that is based on a number of factors, including overdose deaths within your county, the number of pills that got shipped into your county, and that sort of thing. So this doesn't correspond to population, although population factors in. But we get 2.649%. And because our health department is with us and Box Elder and Rich County, it may be helpful to note that Box Elder is getting 1.464, and Rich County gets a pittance at 0.61%. And then I've handed you the latest estimate of what the actual numbers will be based on those percentages. Cache County will be getting, and the date is always here, July 1 of each year. They're hoping that these initial ones will be out by the end of July. It may be a little later than that. But we will get two payments this year, one for last year and one for this year. First one about $173,000, the second one about $242,000. That's the legal background, and I'll get out of the way for Jordan to talk about what you can do with.
You said, we, if we choose to allocate, you can keep some back, but if you keep some back, it's still got to go to all of these approved uses.
Eventually, it's got to go.
So you can hold some if you had some event that was needed two years down the road or something.
Or a facility that you're going to build or something like that.
Is there a timeframe for holding it?
I've not seen a timeframe for holding it.
And will this amount coming in be less than 15%? Or we have to submit that?
So, yeah, this is the amount that we're getting. 15% of that goes toward attorney's fees. Our attorneys are applying to the national fund to hopefully get all or a lot of that 15% from the National Attorney's Fees Fund, and then it wouldn't come out of here. To the extent they don't get their full 15% out of the National Attorney's Fees Fund, then we'll have to.
So at first, we need at least withhold 15% till we hear on that, correct?
I believe that's right.
Well, no, we need a lot more cash in the economy right now. We're headed to recession.
John, is that per year or per payment? Or do we have to pay the 15% right off the top of the total amount?
I, that's a very good question, and I don't know what our outside counsel would expect on that. I would imagine that they would work with us.
If it's 15% off the full amount right up, we're in debt already.
Yeah. So we've not asked those questions, because we're all kind of just waiting to see what they get from the national fund.
Great, thank you.
So do we put this in a special fund in our budget? Is that what we do? Or how do we allocate this money?
That's a question for accounting. And what you can use it for as you allocate it out is, you know, there in the, how to do that accounting, that would be a question for Cameron.
So we need to make sure that they go into expenditure funds, for example?
Well, you need to put it into a.
A special fund?
Mm-hmm.
Because expenditure funds are fungible.
That is my opinion, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Well, I'm pulling this up just to give you a little bit of background of. Now that I unplugged it, it went away. Hold on one second. There we go. Oh, man. What is that doing now? There we go. All right, sorry about that. John and I talked briefly before, and so most of these slides are just information that he, he was going to cover, just talking about the settlement. What I wanted to focus on was a little bit of the data and give you a background of where the process has been as far as understanding what these can be applied for, or applied to, and bringing stakeholders together, those that are working around the issue, to the table to say what, what strategies make sense based off of the data for our community. And so we had a meeting last week, and we had Verar mental health, USU extension. We invited law enforcement to come to that meeting. And then we had our prevention team and our treatment team represented there to kind of review what the strategies were, review the data, and say, given the fact that the amount of money that you see coming in annually isn't a ton for an entire community, what strategies might make sense for us to even consider. So trying to whittle down that big portion of the settlement and say, what strategies based off of the data have some relevance for us. And so that's, I'm going to present some of the data and then let you know some of the strategies that we thought had some merit. We're going to present seven of those strategies based off of a logic model, realizing that those seven strategies can't all be funded. But the big question is, where do we go from here? How do we want to kind of sharpen our sword and figure out where we want to actually point our resources to? So I'm going to go over just a quick amount of the data. This is, this is based off of Utah. You can see that drug poisonings, overdoses, are the leading cause of unintentional injury in the state of Utah. They continue to be, they've, they were on an increase and they've been plateauing and declining, but they still outpace things like firearms and motor vehicle accidents. So they are, continue to be a public health issue. This data right here.
Jordan, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On this chart? You got drug poisoning in motor vehicles that are unintentional. Are those firearm deaths unintentional as well? Because obviously, we've got an issue with shootings and things. Would those, would that firearm death number include intentional deaths?
I need to get back to you on that. I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
This data is for our three counties, well, our two counties and, and the state of Utah as you look at a comparison. And the Office of the Medical Examiner didn't start to delineate opioid-related overdoses until 2016. So the things that you see from 2000 and on include everything, although we know based off of use trends that a lot of those do comprise opioid-related overdoses. You can see that both Box Elder and Cache County are on similar trends with a few spikes in Box Elder County that, that are higher than the state trend. Some of that may do, just be due to population size, although we do adjust for that. This right here that you're seeing is our crude rate of accidental or undetermined overdoses, and that's looking at opioid-specific from 2016. And the good news is, it's been on a plateau slash decline. You can see that Box Elder County increased and just went a little bit above the state rate over in 2020. But overall, things have been, at least on the mortality side of things, been on a better trend than they had been in the past. And some of that is due to interventions such as naloxone. Is everyone familiar with what naloxone is? This one breaks those down. It's not a rate. This is the actual counts that you're seeing per county from 2016. So if you look at 2020, Box Elder County had 38. That's about, during this timeframe, so from 2016 to 2020, they had 38, and Cache County had 42 overdoses. That's about eight per year in Cache County and 7.5 per year in Box Elder County. So that's the actual numbers. You can see this right here. This is the state, and this is the accidental or undetermined overdose, and this is just looking at the state. And this increase, we believe, is being driven a lot by fentanyl. So this next slide actually kind of shows why we think that correlation is happening. As you can see, as you break it down by the type of opioid, from prescriptions to heroin to synthetics, which includes the fentanyl, and then the methadone there at the bottom, all of them have been trending either flat or down, where we're starting to see this increase in the synthetic use.
So where's the source of fentanyl? Where does it originate from?
I don't know that. Like, are you saying, where do they?
Yeah, where do they make it and distribute it from? I mean, it's not something that you can go down to Walgreens and cook up like meth. It's being distributed from a central location, right?
Yeah.
But we don't, we haven't really tracked that down yet.
I'd have to defer to law enforcement, and they were invited, but do you know?
Mexico via, well, via Mexico originally from China. There we go. China is the word we're looking for. Thank you.
For approximately $5,000 dollars on a dirt weapon, you could buy a fentanyl and kill the entire population of Cache County.
But it's originating in China.
Florida had a report today that there's finding dollar bills folded with fentanyl in it, and just a very little amount. Death rated.
Did you see them doing how many, how many fentanyl pills were found on I-15 passing through every day?
So we're seeing that increase. Here's the state, broken down by the same categories. You can see that blue line there on the bottom is that increase in the synthetic fentanyl. You can see methadone, not methadone, but methamphetamines are on the rise as well. And heroin has more or less plateaued while prescription drugs continue to decline. And we're seeing that, I'll show that, but this is kind of what Tim was alluding to. When you look at the overdoses, they're strongly correlated with the amount that law enforcement are confiscating in the state. So the bar lines are the confiscations by law enforcement of this product, and the blue line is the overdoses related to that product. The other thing to note when we are looking at the overdoses based off of those products, they don't, they add up to more than 100 because sometimes there's multiple drugs in the individual system. So they are accounted for possibly in more than one category. So I'm trying to remember what, the opioid-related drug overdose deaths, this is by county. So as you look at this, you can see the majority of the deaths over in Box Elder County are still from prescription drugs, but the rise of the synthetics is there. We've seen a little bit of a decrease from 2019 to 2020. And this is Cache County, as you look at it by the type. And so that blue line, once again, is still prescription. So prescription opioids are still an issue, although we are seeing them trend in a better direction. And then the increase of, of the synthetics as well. So demographics, it's interesting to kind of look at the demographics and who's at risk for overdose. And this isn't, this isn't necessarily mortality. This is tied to accidental opioid overdose. So if I were to overdose and I was, as somebody administers naloxone, I would, could be counted in that age category. Or if I end up at the hospital and I still live, this is not just the mortality. And so when you look at Cache County, it's men aged 35 to 44. They were the most at risk for overdose, followed closely by the women of the same age. And then looking at the younger age category, 25 to 34, for both women and men, were the other categories that were most at risk. And then when you look at Box Elder County, it's interesting to see that it's women aged 55 to 64 who actually were at most risk for overdose. And then that's followed by women of the younger category, and then men of even a younger category, and then the men of the higher category. So it's not necessarily the same age groups across our jurisdiction when we would look at where our targeted interventions could be focused. This, this is just looking at it across the age category by that accidental overdose, and it's based off of those dates from 2018 to 2022, looking at, the red is the females, the blue is the males. This, and our epidemiologist, I couldn't, he's out of town on vacation. He didn't mark these ones by county. So I believe this one is Cache County, and this other one is, no, this one is Box Elder County. This first one is Box Elder County, I'm pretty sure.
So do you count any overdoses accidental rather than intentional, or what?
No, but you have, that's determined by, not by the health department, it's just determined by the medical chart or by the medical examiner's office. So it's really hard, that's the thing, is.
Because if I took my doses but yet still died, that's an accidental, but rather than an overdose, being an accidental, right?
Yeah. Determining it's real hard, and there's, I can tell you, there's no systematic way. It, a lot of the discretion is left up to the provider. Doctors are the ones that declare death, right? And then a medical examiner can come in and say, based off of the thing, everything, we may have reason to believe that this was a suicide if it's tied with a note. But if there's no note, and I just overdosed, but I really meant to kill myself.
It's not a note.
How do you know, right?
So did you see, off the top of your head, you may not know, we see a shift in age between the two counties, but is there anything, you know, socioeconomically that is consistent between the two counties and the overdoses? It seems like it always skews male versus female, but is there kind of consistent markers?
You're talking about the socioeconomic status of the individual?
Are these individuals, while they seem to be younger in Box Elder than they would be in Cache, are they unemployed, are they, you know?
Would have to.
Records, things like that?
Would have to dive into that more. There's, that's one of the things, kind of the next question's like, what do we, what don't we know that we still need to know? So I think that's a good question. Baron, can you draw that down? Is that all right? Any other questions on that?
Let me just ask one question. Back before, you used the term "most likely to die." And that terminology doesn't quite fit with the data you're showing. Is the data you're showing people who actually died? Or is it, it says, it said "most likely to die"?
Which, which, can you help?
Back, uh, let's see.
Yeah, that one right there.
Yeah, "most likely to die."
That's a good question. And unfortunate, unfortunately, I didn't put the data together, and our epidemiologist's on vacation, so I don't, I don't know, I asked him to put this together, so I can find that out.
What's your question, Carl?
Well, demographic 10 trends by ages, says in Cache County, men ages 35 to 44 were the most likely to die from accidental opioid overdose. It doesn't say where, that that's where most of the deaths occurred, because it said "most likely to die." And so I'm just wondering what the terminology.
I think, Carl, I mean, the way that I'm looking at this chart is, is the same thing. That's where most of the deaths occurred, within that, those age groups. Because if you look at the beige bands they have on these bar charts, and you take that 35 to 44 for males, and the 25 to 34 for females, that's where you get the widest ranges.
The biggest range, yeah.
What's a rate?
So I'm just, I'm just thinking that it probably tracks the, the bar charts there. But I. But I didn't put the graphs together either, so I'm just spitballing. It's worth what you just paid for it, Carl.
We'll get back to you, Carl, on that.
Already got his money's worth, right?
That's right.
They are projecting that if you're in that age group, you're most likely to die. And that's what it sounds like, but that doesn't make sense.
Opioid.
What we've been talking about.
What did you get there?
They're the ones dying most frequently, is what they mean.
Oh, you did.
That would be a better way to term it.
All this is right there. She's on the ball.
Just a quick, looking at the trends, kind of hotspots, if you look at this, this really trends with where our population is when you actually look at the, so this is the count percentiles, and really you're seeing things in our most populated areas, Logan, Brigham City, North Logan, Tremonton, those are the areas that are the hottest on this heat map. When you actually do it by a rate, it does change a little bit. Some of the areas that pop up when you look at a rate are like the Clarkston, Cornish, Lewiston, Providence, and Cache County, and then over in Box Elder County, you have Snowmills, Promatory, and Tremonton, as well as Brigham City, that stays there on the heat map. So it changes when we look at it by rate a little bit, you see, you see a little bit change in where you, where they're at greater risk. This is what I was referencing earlier, the retail opioid prescription dispense per 100 individuals. And you can see on there, it's kind of hard to see, but Cache is the bottom blue line, and then you have Box Elder, that's the red line, the US is the yellow line, and then Utah is the green line. And you can see that currently, right now, both of these counties are trending below what the state and national average are for the dispensing of prescription opioids. And we were on a meeting with our two medical systems this morning, and both of them are actively doing things to decrease that, to make sure that they're being more responsible in the distribution of opioids to individuals. However, they are not the only mechanism. We have Dennis and other people that don't fall under those umbrellas that still have prescribing rights, that could be, we could work with to address some of that. This is one of those great trends that we've been seeing, and may be correlated with the plateauing or the decreasing in the overall mortality associated with opioid overdose. And this is, that blue line, if I remember right, is, I can't see it very well in here either.
Non-fatal.
Yeah, so it's the non-fatal, the red is fatal, and then the yellow is, was naloxone administered. And the beautiful thing on this is you can see that in every case, naloxone was administered. There was two deaths, obviously, there that took place even though naloxone was administered. But we are doing, there is work that has been done with first responders to make sure that they have access to it and they're utilizing that tool.
What's the cost of naloxone per dose, do you know?
Tim.
$75.
Say again?
$75.
Per administration, or per dose?
$75 per two, it's a kit, it contains two naloxone, for example, nasal sprays. That's what it costs. So about $139 for personally, your prescription for it.
Is there a life to that, duration, shelf life?
Actually, it's about three and a half, four years now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Jordan, I just have, this is more of a, I'm just curious question. This slide before, it almost looks like Box Elder shut down a pill mill in 2018. We need to find, we need to find that doctor in Cache County and get below them again.
That was, that was one of the questions that we had with our providers, or with the medical systems, is could we get the data that shows by provider, who's, who might be, you know, the outliers that may be prescribing more and more, more than you would anticipate they would be prescribing? And look at that that way. That'd be something that would have to work with the state on to try to figure out how we could best get that data, but yeah, they had a huge decrease there.
I mean, that was, that was a success story like you couldn't believe, right?
Yeah.
At least from opioid prescriptions. Maybe they got a bunch of fentanyl in, offset that or something.
That's when I quit working at Cache County.
So this is, this is Box Elder, yeah, this one's Box Elder County. You can see that they also had success in the administration of naloxone across the board. So things are going well there. According to our epidemiologist, the biggest takeaways are, although there are successes, opioid-related deaths remain one of the highest causes of injury mortality in our counties. The face of opioid, the opioid epidemic seems to be shifting more to synthetics. And then trying to understand who's most at risk may be, may be our best chance for targeted interventions. And there's still a lot of questions that we need to say, can we get our hands on this data, or should we seek that data? I mentioned before, this is just showing you, we pulled our treatment, prevention, and criminal justice teams together and tried to review the data and have conversations around what strategies make sense and kind of coalesce some of those strategies where we have overlap. So we put things on a whiteboard, and then we transferred it to this logic model that I would like to take one minute and share with you if I can. I really just want to focus on the strategies. So I'm going to see if I can increase that. There are seven different strategies that we have, and I'll kind of just work backwards from the strategy. Increased distribution of medically assisted treatment to all individuals, including those who are uninsured or who insurance does not cover the need for service. Medically assisted treatment is just what it says, it's providing a medication that either mostly blocks the receptors for these drugs, and therefore negates the high that the individual feels from the use. Brock, you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, it just fills up the receptor, so the other bounces off of it, but it can't, it can't, it can't.
So this in conjunction with other talk therapy can be very effective in helping individuals to, to be able to move into recovery. But there are some things that are limitations. We currently have MAT going on through the health department, we may have some others in our community that are offering medically assisted treatment, but we have a lot of individuals, we have a huge gap in our, in Box Elder County. We, as a health department, have not been offering it in the county. Individuals are required to come over to where our providers are. That constraint is really a constraint of being able to have the funding, to have a provider, travel over, spend a day, and provide the MAT treatment there. There may be some options for telehealth, but having it in the community over there could be a benefit to them. Really, most of the constraints are around paying a provider, making sure a provider feels adequate in their ability to do this. It's, it's something that has to be managed and coordinated, preferably with a therapist, so that individuals stay on their plan. So case management is very successful, if you have a case manager as well to support that process, it can be very successful.
Jordan, and I think Beth's here too, which is fantastic from the mental health piece of this, is we got all this money sloshed around, and we talk about facilities all the time, everybody gets gung ho about building and building. But it sounds to me like the real constraint in the system is providers. So we can build the Taj Mahal if we want to, and it's not going to do us a damn bit of good. We need to put the money into providers. Is that what I'm kind of hearing you say?
I agree with you 100%. I mean, we've, we've talked and said, if we had more capacity, realistically, how many more counselors could we actually, could we recruit? And if we could recruit them, we may just be stealing them from Beth, and she might just be stealing them from us, right?
Where can I help and get them?
So yeah, it is a constraining factor for us, the providers. Go ahead.
Jordan, so some of this money that we're getting could be used to provide personnel or staff to help with the treatment of some of these.
Yeah, and I think we can be creative in it. You have to actually have a prescriber to do the MAT, you want to have a therapist that supports that. But where you, where we could look is, how much could a case manager or caseworker that doesn't have to have a license of any sort, that's just working between, you know, their actual treatment plan to their vocational plan? I mean, so much of it is how do you create other successes in their life to help them? And how much work could those individuals take off of, say, that our counselors are doing, so that that counselor can now treat five more people in the community than they were before, because before they were doing all the case management as well, right? So I think there's ways for us to look at it and not just look solely at the licensed provider. We do have to have those, and we have more need for them. But did that answer your question a little bit? Gina, do you have a question?
No, just listening. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So that, do you have anything else to add on MAT, Brock?
Can you give an example, example of that? So like when they come out of jail and lose them, between their treatment, and that's where case manager could step in and maybe step down to a treatment facility, for example?
So it's not they don't have any place to go, they just need somebody shepherding them along the process? Okay.
That jumps me to the next one, which is, provide evidence-based treatment and recovery support, including MAT for persons with opioid use disorder and co-occurring substance abuse disorder or mental health disorders within and transitioning out of the criminal justice system. As we met with law enforcement, there's, there's a huge gap, we lose people as they leave the criminal justice system. It is a place where many of these individuals have gone through detox, but if, if we don't have a system that can support them as they leave there, they typically will end back up using. And so if we can get them support, and we've already had conversations with, with the Cache County jail of how, how can we do a better job in working with them to start an individual on MAT before they leave, leave the jail? So even if they decided to go get high, they won't have the high that they're anticipating, and you lose that reward system. So, but lack of funding for case managers is a big thing to help us manage those and coordinate between all the agencies that are working on this. Lack of continuity of care, some, expecting an individual who does, already doesn't think real logically due to their addiction and saying, you know what, you need to go over here and go, go see so-and-so at the Bear River Health Department, the likelihood of that happening is pretty low. If you're just saying, you know what, word-of-mouth referral, you need to go over there. I think there's more that we can do to support these individuals and help them.
So Jordan, I don't want to be a broken record, but I'm going to be a broken record.
Okay, go ahead.
You said case manager. The biggest mistake we can make right now is to allocate our resources to physical facilities rather than actual providers. So if we took all this money and dumped it into a building, it would do you no good. You need people.
I, we definitely need people, and they're the ones that we need to sustain whatever effort.
Okay, so I think that's where we need to focus our efforts as a county, rather than physical facilities, we need actual providers and funding for people to deliver the services to those most in need.
I will, can I get to my next one, which does?
Sure. You keep saying people, and I just.
Yeah, I agree 100% that facilities without people don't make a whole lot of sense.
So we should fund people first?
Well, we need, yeah.
Okay.
So this one is develop and expand and improve warm handoff services to transition to treatment and recovery services, including detox and diversion options made available through a centralized receiving center. The issue what we have, as we talk to law enforcement and our hospitals, is these are the only places that an individual has to go to detox. We don't have a detox center, and those are extremely expensive options for both the individual and for the healthcare system or society. So is there an option for us to look at how we can assist these individuals and use a detox facility as a way to transition into care? And then transition from there into recovery? So the hospital said, in fact, the new CEO of the Cache Valley Hospital said she came from Oregon, had a similar type facility, and she said it took a lot of strain off their ED. It just removed people from there and it allowed them to move into detox. So.
So where was, where was that in Oregon, did she come from?
I can't remember exactly. Oh, I can find out.
And the reason I'm asking these questions, if you look at like the Tenderloin Center, the transition center that's in San Francisco, that they were using to kind of transition people out, that's been, as much as they want to say, that's been a debacle in a lot of ways. And so I just want to make sure that we, here in Cache County, can look around to places like Oregon or places like San Francisco that have significantly bigger problems than we do from that area, and make sure that we're funding the right, the right mechanisms rather than something that just looks good, and we dump a whole bunch of money in and end up with no results.
Okay.
I have a question about that detox as well. I remember hearing the sheriff talk about what JRI did and how it doesn't keep people in jail long enough for them to detox. Does that contribute to the problem of getting these people detoxed?
I'm going to let Brock speak on that.
Absolutely. Drug court has been, you're familiar with drug court, I assume? In my humble opinion, drug court has been very weakened by JRI, and part of that is that dry out period. It's not that we say, okay, we got to beat these people over, hit them with a stick, that's not it. But we don't have anything in any of our caption areas here to, for them to really get sober. And so, you know, drug court rules have changed, now the biggest time you can kind of put them in jail is a couple of weeks. Well, they can sweep that off. They just need longer, longer dry out periods, and they'll tell you that. The graduates, they tell us that every time I do graduation, the best thing that happened to me was those 30 days up front jail because my brain got cleared. And then I'd come out and do the treatments afterward. So yes, I agree, it's a problem.
Would a detox center give them long enough to actually detox and 30, can they stay there 30 days?
Not, not to that extent. A detox center is more the crisis, immediate crisis, you know, even life-saving type of a thing. Not, not the 30-day dry out, but it's a start. Not, not the 30-day dryout, but it's a start, and it will save lives.
Thank you.
Paul, if I, if I could build my Taj Mahal, can I tell them about my Taj Mahal, Brock? It would, it would be a facility in our community that had detox, was partnered with Bear River Mental Health for, for, for kind of a receiving center. But we would move our treatment team, and eventually have our outpatient and residential treatment. We, we have a need for a residential treatment in our community. We don't have it. If we could co-locate all that, I think we could maximize our providers' capacity to be able to have detox, a receiving center for mental health-related crisis, and then an individual, if they so chose, and could, could do it, could transition into residential treatment or outpatient treatment. But for these individuals, I think sometimes we, we need to, they need to have one place to go.
So I talked to Sheriff Jensen over a year ago about, you know, he was talking about ideas about a resource center, more than a year ago. Is that, where do you co-locate the stuff, Jordan? Where would, where would Bear River Health Department want to co, like, co-locate things?
In the community?
Yeah.
I don't really have a preference, other than it needs to be close to, to mass transportation. So many of our clients utilize that, so I'd want to make sure that it was somewhere that, that they could gain access to it regardless of transportation. Transportation can't be a huge barrier for people to, to enter treatment, or to continue to receive treatment. Otherwise, we're going to lose them.
Okay.
So, I don't know that I have a preference.
I got a question. Do you, this, as you bring these together, you keep them together, you have a system, you have, you could get people possibly, you could, you could actually organize that all together, with Bear River Health, Bear River Mental Health, all that can just work together in a facility that you guys ran, right?
Yeah, my, my thought process behind-
You would not want a competing aspect for that, would you? In other words, someone else that came in and, and was trying to do it on their own, too?
Be like a private organization, or?
No, another governmental organization.
Yeah, no, we need to-
You can handle that, right? You could, you could do that.
Well, my thought in co-locating everything is, if we could co-locate outpatient and residential, we would probably have to expand some staff, but that way I don't, I have counselors on-site that can actually do the residential treatment while they're working their day shift, right? You're going to have to have 24-hour support at a residential treatment, but it, it maximizes the staff that we currently have to be able to do the work that needs to be done. Whereas if I keep my staff where they're currently located and have a residential treatment, I have to figure out a way to, to shuffle people back and forth. So, similar, I mean, to, we, we spend a lot of time between our facility and the jail, so that already stretches our staff a little bit. You have any other comments on that, Brock? And we like Beth, we can work with her and her team to-
I agree with that, but certainly it'd be fun to use staff with difficult staff, particularly prescribers, just whether they're quite a prescriber. And part of the reason we don't have that inbox, so it can be probably as hard to identify the person that's serving the law, and we can share our prescribing staff with the healthcare department.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is, if, in the long run, and the best thing would be that Cache County helped you to function the best way that you could in, in these things, rather than independently go do our own thing, right? In other words, you need to be, you're already set up for it. There's no reason for us to even pursue our own kind of facility and our own needs, right?
Yeah.
Good, okay. I just want to make that very clear, too, because I've, I've heard the wind of things. It just really irritates me when we should be working directly with you, because I think you're the professionals, you're the boots-on-the-ground. So, thank you.
So, that's the warm handoff. We, I can go through the logic model, but it goes back to, the crux of the issue is, we've got to support these individuals as much as we can, rather than allow them to try to navigate the system. Oh, God, what did I do? I went over, sorry. The next one is expand the lock zone access and training to first responders, schools, community support groups, and families. The, the data shows that it's working. The, the thought process behind this is, we need to continue to support that. We need to continue to make sure that the infrastructure is in our community. If we need to expand it, we expand it. But it's, it's probably the thing that's primarily decreasing, our mortality, and Tim's done a great job of, of working on that in the community. Do you have any comments on that, Tim, that you want to share?
I think it's just important to give it to the people that are in treatment, as well as the family members involved with it. We've saved over 30 lives just in one treatment facility. They're doing that over the past two and a half, two years.
Where is that, yeah?
Who are we making sure has in the lock zone right now? Just enforcement, please?
I should, I should, health department actually provided to me from state, and then I'm actually giving it out to people like USU Police Department, I'm actually training the pain clinics. If you request, we do the pain clinics, give it to them, to patients that may need it, they can't afford it, and as well as anybody in the community that wants it, as well as any treatment facility, or anybody who asks us, we'll train them.
So the state's funding it?
Correct. Some, we bought some, we have a grant that actually pays for some, but we bought some.
Okay.
And the state actually began, must have received some more money for that, so we get some from them also.
Good to know, thank you.
And so do they, where, for this training, you're talking about, say, a family or somebody like that, do they go to the health department, or do they come to you?
The health department does some also, you know, they pay some, we work with them also, but if someone asks us, we actually provide it for the families, or we're having a big opioid conference coming up in a couple of weeks, we'll provide it to the whole communities there.
Okay.
The next one is around provider education. It's kind of a two-pronged approach with regards to provider education. One would be informing providers, if this provider is, is working with an individual and identifies any sort of substance abuse disorder that could be treated through MAT, how do they get the referral? Making sure our providers know where they can refer individuals to, how they, they can refer them. But the other one would be looking at the prescribing practices. Like I said, it seems like our two big systems are, are really focused on this and trying to, to drive that down. It may be an opportunity for us as a community to work with those others on the preventive side of things, is, how can you limit the number of, of pills that you're prescribing and still successfully manage pain? The medical director, Dr. Peterson, Logan Regional, says they've actually seen better results with pain management with less opioids. That's what they're finding in, within the Intermountain system, that pain management is not an issue, and they're managing pain actually at a better level than they had been in the past, with less pills going out. So, how can we do that across the board with all prescribers? The, the next one would be around focused on prevention. There are evidence-based models for putting community coalitions together. We have a lot of people working on this front in our community, and sometimes we just need to bring those individuals all to the table and identify where are our gaps, collectively work on a strategic plan, rather than trying to piecemeal it together. And so looking at, how do we create a community coalition that has experts, community advocates, that are working in the community to address this? And they may be a, a real source that can help drive whatever plan the county decides to put forth as a result of this settlement. And then the last one, we need to have evidence-based data collection and research to analyze the effectiveness of whatever we do. We want to be able to, to say to our community, we not only went after these companies, but we took the dollars that they gave to us, and we made a difference in our community. We saved individuals' lives, we prevented individuals from becoming addicted, and we helped those that were addicted to get the treatment they needed to live the most successful life that they can. But that requires some, some data to, to allow us to do that. And as Ben said, there's still questions that we need answers to, and we need to be able to see if we can either get that data, if it currently exists, or try to collect that data on our own, to get the answer that we need. So those are the seven strategies of the many. If you read through there, there's a lot of different strategies. These were really broad-based strategies. If you've worked in a logic model before, we're going to, we didn't put all the supporting data, we actually didn't put any, we went, but as we hone down some of these strategies, we'll support them with data, and then we'll start doing kind of a resource assessment within the community, and say, what resources do we have that it might be, might already be working on this, that we could couple it with? And then that's when you start getting into, okay, the broad, you have a broader-based strategy, what activities are going to support that strategy? And how are they going to be tied to outputs, outcomes, and ultimately the, the impact in our community? So, that's how we would propose to, to tie this, whatever we decide to go with, into that. So, I think the only other-
Jordan, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You have these numbered, but is that priority, or just, they just happen to get numbered that way? What are the priorities? What do you guys think is the biggest thing that you guys put the money for? What's your thoughts?
That's a good question, and the, the answer to it is, those numbers have nothing to do with priority.
Okay.
I think in the end, it kind of goes down to this. What questions, questions do we still need to answer? And number two, what strategies do we still address the greatest need, or provide the greatest value to our community? And I don't think we've done the, the robust work that we need to do to answer that question. We've kind of said, here's what makes sense, given what we're seeing in the community between law enforcement, treatment, and prevention. But, and then some of that's going to be driven by that annual dollar figure, right? I mean, what, what can we actually fund? Treatment's far more expensive than prevention is, all the time. So, in this realm as well. So, but treatment also has a preventive factor to it. When you, I call it change the family tree. When you stop addiction in, in an individual's life, then you stop the modeling of poor practice of those that are proximate to that individual, whether that's family, friends. You can have an impact that way. So, we don't have the priority, I think, the, the heavy lift of trying to prioritize. We kind of took a list of many, many strategies and tried to narrow it down to seven that we thought could have an impact in our community. Question is, where do we want to really focus? And does, does that change, as you make an impact on area? Does that shift? And we reallocate resources, so. Go ahead.
Did, or, did you want to finish up with something else?
These are just questions that we need to work on considering. What do we still need to answer? What are the greatest needs? What data do we have from the community to support it? What's going to work? What do we know will work, or at least have a good, good guess that it will work? The other one is, who's best positioned? There may be some things that, that the health department's not best positioned to do, and we need to be honest and, and say, who's the best position to address this issue? How do we bring those people to the table? The big question is, how do you sustain it, right? And then, how much funding will they take? And really, what's the next steps, and who's, who's going to take the lead on it? So, these are just, this was just meant to be a springboard to say, where do we go from here? We have an opportunity to put together a plan, and, so.
Well, Jordan, before, before we end, really quick, because I thought that was a good point, where you talk about who's best positioned. I got to say that when I came on to Cache County, and I've been involved in a lot, a lot of organizations, I was pretty worried when Lloyd was retiring, because he'd done a fantastic job at the Bear River Health Department. And so we had a lot of strong, good leadership over the years, and a really good organization. I mean, fortunately, USU Extension with Tim, with, with Beth, with, with Bear, Mental Health, we, we have that going, but I was a little bit worried. You have been phenomenal, leading the health department, so I'm really going to be looking to you for what the health department can and can't do, because as far as transitions go with organizations, my hat's been off to you through this whole thing. I mean, you, you guided us through probably one of the biggest events that we've had as a society, and sometimes when you see organizations transition, it's not good. But Bear River Health Department's been fantastic, and I appreciate you.
Thanks, likewise.
Jordan, I agree with what Paul said. My question was going to be, what do you see the council's role in moving forward on this?
I think it's, what, what do you, the ultimate decision from the council or the commission is, is you guys hold the purse strings, and ultimately you'll be responsible to answer a question, why did you give money from the settlement here, 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 here? And the question, like, what do you need to be able to make that final decision? What do you want to see with regards to that? We have 18 years to, to work on this, maybe more, based off of, it sounds like it can roll forward a little bit, but we have 18 years to work on this. But what do you need to, to, one, make the initial decision of how to allocate them? And then what do you want to see from year to year? What kind of accountability do you need back from whoever this money is delegated to, to, to do that?
Do you see us as an advisory board, or what is it that you?
That's a good question. I, I view you as kind of the, the ultimate decision-making board, and maybe putting together an advisory board that, that advises the council and the commissions of the county to determine how to, to best put that together. And, and I don't know if that comes with formal appointments from the governing boards, who you feel comfortable to be on that, but we, we could actually put together, start the, the effort of putting together that community coalition to act as somewhat of an advisory board, moving forward, and, and propose plans and say, here's what it is.
Well, Madam Chair, if I could just, one, one of the things I always look for is competence, and I think that, that Bear River Health Department is, has demonstrated competence over the years. So as far as community coalitions and things, I'd appreciate it, Jordan, if you'd kind of take the lead on a lot of this stuff-
I would, too.
-and putting together that, that coalition, demonstrated competence, and the ability to work with, with a wide range of folks within the community. So I mean, if you've put together some stuff and you bring us some suggestions, it's something that, that I would put huge stock into.
I'd appreciate you starting that and overseeing that.
Can I ask Box Elder, what you'd like to see?
No, it sounds pretty similar. We, and this is a little bit, and the last thing we want to do is try to create another program that the county or the commission would administer. We already have programs in place, and so it makes sense to send additional funding to existing programs to minimize admin costs. And I think Bear River Health, Bear River Mental Health are more than adequate to do that, as well as some to our law enforcement agencies, or like Narcan- Or like Narcan, naloxone, immediate intervention, but I don't think we want to reinvent the wheel.
I think you're right.
You're right.
All right, any of the rest of you have any comment or anything? Counsel? All right, thank you so much, Jordan. Excellent presentation. We appreciate it. Appreciate all your work also. All right, we do have an executive session to move into. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, make the motion that we move into executive session.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session and we move. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
That tells you how we get to move the money.
Yeah.
Where it goes. You saw that? That's the big one.